Of the agenda as submitted, this is for possible action. We have a motion from Joe, second from Richard. Any discussion from the trustees? See none. Any public comment regarding the agenda?
Seeing none.
Renee? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Trustee Varner, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is the superintendent's report. This is for information only. Mr. Stokes, good evening.
Thank you, President Walker. It's nice to be with you and the other trustees and our audience tonight. Thank you for being here. A short report for me this evening, but I did want the trustees and members of our community to know that today I submitted a request for variance to the Superintendent of Public Instruction. As you know, our schools and our buses have been operating at approximately 50% and that's because of some of the restrictions that are associated with COVID-19. As you know, we have been working to try and open more aspects of our schools and we are hoping that we'll be able to move grades three through six back into the schools at the start of the second semester. Now, I realize that this comes at a time when COVID cases seem to be spiking in the nation and also in the state. However, with the governor's last presentation, he has suggested that it is vital that we open our schools not only for the benefit of the students and the children and the staff, but also for the benefit of our economy. And of course, in my mind, that is second to getting our students back in school where they have face-to-face contact with their peers and also with their teachers. So the purpose for submitting that variance was to see if the state superintendent would allow us to go beyond that three-foot social distancing component on our school buses. If that is turned down, then we'll have to go to our community and ask for consideration to bring their children to school in most of the cases so that we can maintain that three-foot social distancing aspect on our buses. Anyway, I wanted that to get out to our community members and certainly to the trustees so that folks could know that we are working toward that more full opening of our schools at the start of the second semester, and that's the 19th of January. With that, Mr. President, I'd just like to wish the trustees, certainly our students, our families and our staff, a happy Thanksgiving and hope that if they're traveling, they'll be safe. And we look forward to starting back up on December the first, which will be our first day after the break when our students and our staff will come back to work. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, and we wish you a happy Thanksgiving as well, you and your family. And trustees, I was going to start with announcement in light of the governor's recent announcement about masks. I'm going to ask that you keep your masks on when you're making your comments. Please move your microphone close. I'm going to apologize in advance if I interrupt you. It's just so Renee could get your comments accurately in our record. The next item on the agenda is board reports. And we will start with, I don't see Carson High School or Pioneer. All right, we'll start with trustee Crossman. Is there Laurel?
Hi.
We hear you.
I just thought, okay, I don't have a report tonight, but I'd like to congratulate the essay contest winners and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Same to you.
Lupe?
So I do have a couple of announcements from Empire. All grade levels have been working on hydroponics and growing vegetables. Our second graders made their first salad from lettuce that they grew. They have been asked by Mr. Run, excuse me, Newton, a clinical laboratory scientist with a background in biomedical, can I remove this? I'm sorry. Can I remove this for a second? I felt choking is too tight. Forgive me. Sorry about that. Okay, so they have been asked by Mr. Run Newton, a clinical laboratory scientist with a background in biomedical engineering to beta test a COVID watch that tracks body temperature. All the fifth-grade students and some staff were, will wear the watches and collect data in the hopes that they can help produce a watch that could help school age, school stay in school during the pandemic. So that's really super exciting and innovative news. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Stacy?
I have Pioneer's announcements. Pioneer High is proud to welcome Coral Lee Bales as the new job JAG coach specialist. Congratulations to Dalton, and I'm sorry Dalton, I'm going to try here, Yan Canos, Pioneer's senior spotlight this month. You can read his story on Carson now. Pioneer's publication class has released this month's newsletter. Find it on the school's website. Two staff members applied and won mini-grants. Congratulations to John Corbett and Kristen Standinos for their effort. Leadership students worked with donations from the Hernandez family and the Pioneer staff to assemble 31 Thanksgiving meal baskets for local families in need. A shout out to Spood Max for helping this tradition carry on and also thanks to Galfour USA for donating some sturdy boxes. Another special thanks to Team Sports Inc. and Miss Ratty for setting up a successful fundraiser by selling Pioneer gear. They will have another round opening for orders until December 6th. And then an update from NIAA because of the governor's announcement. The NIAA issued specific, suspicet, specific guidelines for the conducting of the winter sports, including guidance for basketball and wrestling. The guidance were issued in hopes of approval for conducting these sports that will be provided by the governor in time for the scheduled 2020-21 winter sports season, which starts in January, and allow these students, these schools to prepare for these events if those sports are approved. At this time, basketball and wrestling are not approved for either practices or competitions under emergency directive 034. The change in gathering limits will be applied at specific sports guidance issued by the NIAA and other procedures can be seen on the NIAA website concerning any others. And then just a big shout out to Carrie Pryor and all the staff that participated in the community PLC. What an amazing event. I learned so much in the breakout sessions that I went to. And of course, there were a couple of technical hitches, but nothing can keep our staff from taking advantage of those. So I really did appreciate their time and effort, especially when it's after hours. And it was probably one of our best attended PLCs that we've had, definitely the most informational for me. So shout out to them for doing that and putting that together. That's all.
Thank you. Richard?
I have no report tonight, but I'd just like to thank everybody for all the work they've been doing this semester. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, not only in the district, but also through the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe?
I don't have a report specific to the high school or student support, but I wanted to reach out and just thank Ms. Loughlin from Carson Middle School. She's a sixth-grade STEM coach. And she, along with others, have reached out to the community and were helping them with the wetland that's out of Carson Middle School. And you know, it's exciting. That started off as a detention basin when we did all the design work at Carson Middle School. And it turned into something that's beneficial for all the students. So it's something that's challenging to do because it takes time, it takes money. And anytime you get volunteers, it's going to, it's going to benefit that site. So anyway, I'm happy to see that she's spearheading it. And I just wanted to congratulate her for taking on that effort. And then I too want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It's a, we're wrapping up a crazy year and hopefully we'll get through it better than we started. And I just want to wish everybody, like the rest of the trustees said, a safe, healthy and happy Thanksgiving break. It's well deserved.
Thank you, Joe. And I just, I wanted to also comment on the community PLC. I think one of the things that really struck me is that we had some people who we don't typically see at those community PLCs. And I think that if anything, just the inclusion of technology and making those types of meetings accessible to families who aren't able to come and spend an hour away from their families. I think that might be something to look at because if we're looking to, to really hear from our families and our stakeholders and get that information in, I think that, I think that was just a great, great session. I, I sat in on Ms. Tuttle's ECE presentation, the ESL presentation. I mean, we just had some really great presentations. And I think that it was beneficial for parents and staff as well. It gave us an outlet to really touch out, touch everyone and just kind of get that feedback. And then I just wanted to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And I hope that you take a little bit of time this week to relax and recharge and gear up for the busy holiday season, which is just beginning. And that will conclude my report. Next item on the agenda is association reports. This is for discussion only. Do we have any association reports?
Seeing none online.
No, Mr. Walker.
Okay, we'll move on. Next, next item on the agenda is public comment. Comments will be accepted in person through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other participating via telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not to simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. Do we have any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Do we have any on the telephone?
Seeing none.
And Ian, if I call you Raymond, I apologize. I've almost done it twice. Do we have any emails?
No public comment via email, Mr. Walker.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, presentation of the 2020-2021 Carson City School Board-sponsored American Citizens Essay Contest winners. This is for discussion only. Mr. Stokes, and I guess this is always one of the things that we all look forward to this year. So we're looking forward to some great essays.
Thank you, President Walker. Trustees, it is one of those highlight evenings that we enjoy. And I'm here to be able to celebrate with you and with some of our students here in our community who have elected to participate in our American Essay Contest, our citizens, American Citizens Contest. And just a little bit of information, this year we had 198 total entries. In comparison, we had 222 last year, so a little bit down, but not bad. We had 56 students from the elementary level who submitted essays, 57 students from the middle school level and 85 students from the high school level. So I want to just say thank you. It takes some time and some effort to study, to research, to think and to write. And we're very grateful for our students and the time and energy that they have put into this effort. The topic this year was an important one. And it goes as follows. As we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, discuss the importance of a citizen's right to vote, both for American citizens and those who are aspiring Americans. And these essays were judged on adherence to topic, quality of writing and originality of thought. Before we recognize our winners, I'd also like to make mention of the staff who willingly helped to read and judge the essays. Like to say thanks first off to the following educators. We have Lacy Carey, Lori Shine, Hillary Mendegia, Robin Williams, Greg Spriggs and Pam Copperthwaite. And I also would like to mention that Mr. A.J. Fueling was called in to support this effort. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Renee Cortez for all of her energy and effort to organize and to pull this off. So Renee, thank you. So now for the fun stuff. The district and the trustees sponsor this event financially and have appropriated $375 to give a cash award to the first, second and third place winners in each of our categories. The first place winner will receive $80 in cash. The second place winner will receive $30 in cash. And our third place winner receives $15 in cash. So I hope this has been a good exercise for our students, knowing that that education, there's some cash money associated with getting involved in some of these activities. So as we have done in the past, we'll begin recognizing our elementary winners. And I would like to invite our third place winner, Suliman Abdulhabi, fifth-grade student at Seliger Elementary to come forward. Unlike years past, I have really enjoyed being able to shake hands and even give a hug for these activities. But given the situation, we'll try to do the best as we can with social distancing. However, if parents are here and would like to get a photograph, we would invite those parents to come down. And I'd be happy to stand alongside or your favorite board member, whoever that might be. Our second place winner in the elementary category is Harley Tatham, fifth grader at Fremont Elementary School. As in the past, we have been able to honor our first place winner by having them read their essay to the board. And tonight's first place winner is out of town. But I believe that we have Nicholas Budd, fifth grader at Seliger Elementary, available on Zoom to read his essay to us. So Nicholas, are you there?
Yes.
The microphone is yours.
Okay. Can you hear us okay?
We could hear you.
Thank you. Every four years, on the first Tuesday of November, we American people vote for our president. For 232 years, we have elected a president that we want to lead, represent and protect our country. Forty-four people have taken on responsibilities, hardships and privileges of being our president. This year, we have the opportunity to vote. So what is voting and why is it so important? We have the amazing opportunity here in America to decide our own future. We can decide who we want to lead us and who we want to represent our nation. We have the opportunity to vote. When we put our vote in, it doesn't get thrown out. It gets taken into consideration. Every vote counts. Barack Obama said, there's no such thing as a vote that doesn't matter. At first though, this was not the case. It used to be that only white men could vote. Then in 1869, the 15th Amendment was passed saying that African-American or often called black men could vote. Then in 1920, 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was passed saying that all women were allowed to vote. Then in 1971, the 26th Amendment was passed saying that only those citizens 18 years older and older could vote. To be able to vote, there are some requirements. First, you must be at least 18 years old. Second, you must register. Third, you must be a US citizen. There are five ways to be or become a US citizen. First, if you were born in the US, you are automatically a US citizen. Second, if at least one of your parents were a US citizen at the, at the time that you were born, then you are a US citizen. Third, if you are under 18, when your parents or parents become citizens, then you may become a citizen as well. Fourth, if you sign up for the US Armed Forces, namely the Navy, Marines, Army, Coast Guard or Air Force, and in some cases, the Space Force. Finally, you must live in the US for a certain amount of time and you must take and pass an English test as well as a US history and government test, better known as civics. You must also be a good moral character, meaning that you have no criminal record. Once you have become a citizen and are at least 18 years old, you are officially able to register to vote. Imagine if we weren't allowed to vote for our president. How would they be picked? Would they draw a name from a hat or would Congress, or would our Congress decide? What if our Congress was biased? Then they choose who they wanted, but we had absolutely no say whatsoever in the matter. That would not be fair. Because we have the right to vote, we can participate in choosing our leaders. When many people think of America, they think justice, rights, Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and especially the ability and privilege to vote. In the dictionary, it says that voting is a choice, a choice that many other people in other countries don't have. Many people have immigrated here because of this reason. The privileges and rights that American, that the American nation gives is what sets it apart from the world. It is what makes people desire to come to the red, white and blue. In 1620, we broke apart from England so that we could be free from the lack of representation that was there. We wanted to be able to start a new, better, fairer country. On July 4th, 1776, we declared with a strong voice our privilege, our right and our entitlement to the long-lasting wish of freedom. After that came our Constitution stating the rights and privileges that each American gets. Susan B. Anthony said, someone struggled for your right to vote, use it. This is extraordinarily true. We should take that opportunity. Abraham Lincoln once said, the ballot is stronger than a bullet. Ironic. It is amazing that we can vote. I think people should vote. Then you get a voice and opportunity and a sticker. I can't wait until I'm allowed to vote. I am very excited to be able to get that sticker and be able to have my opinion taken into consideration. Think about that. One in 382 million people in this country and I get a vote. Thank you.
Nicholas, congratulations. That was very well done. I will hang on to your certificate and to your prize money. Ha ha. No, truly, you can trust me. I heard that, Mr. Varner. But if you'll stop by my office, we will happily give you your certificate and your prize. And thanks again for your efforts. I think, I think maybe mom and dad owe you an ice cream as well. Any comments from our trustees for our first, our winners of our elementary school?
Nicholas, that was very, very well done. Thank you for putting so much thought and effort into it and it was, like I said, again, just very, very good.
And thank you to all of our participants. I think that it's an important exercise to vote, but it's also an important exercise to, to really learn to share your ideas and thoughts, not just verbally, but also in writing. And so thank you to our teachers for kind of instilling those skills in our students and encouraging participation and our families for supporting that. And for all of the staff that took the time to grade these, I think that it sounds like these were well done. Joe, did you have something to add? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We'll next move on to awarding our middle school essay winners. Like to begin with our third place winner, Zane Woods, eighth grader at St. Teresa's. Our second place winner in the middle school category is Sophia Rotoli, sixth grader, and she is homeschooled. And our first place winner in the middle school category from Bethlehem Lutheran is eighth grader Nathan Tac.
Our country has had a long and perilous history, but we have prevailed through all the hardships we have faced and become a better country. The most significant and unique factor of our government that has proved to work tremendously well is citizens and future citizens being able to, being able to vote for our leaders instead of passing the leadership down through a single family. When I think of our country's democracy, three major parts come into mind. These three parts play a big role in separating our democracy from a monarchy, oligarchy or any other form of government. When we have the right to vote for our leaders, we get a choice for who we think would be best for our country that we don't need to share with anyone. We also give everyone who is in our country and over 18 a chance to decide our country's future, no matter the race or gender. Even with the pandemic happening currently, America has used mail-in voting to ensure that everyone gets a vote, showing that it is truly the people who decide what happens in the country. Back in older times, whoever ruled countries was typically decided by how much military power or wealth they had. And it didn't matter whether or not the people of the country hated that leader. Now in America, citizens get a vote that is heard by the government and only the government, no matter what. Earlier this week, I had someone come to my family's house and ask who we were voting for in the upcoming election. And since you don't need to tell anyone but the government who are you voting for, we refused to talk with her. That just goes to show how our leaders respect our privacy by doing everything to keep our ballot private. My mother and father will be voting for separate candidates. That also shows that each individual gets a vote, not just one household. For example, if my brother, who is 18, wants to vote for one part- who is 18, wants to vote for one party, but everyone else in my family that can vote wants to vote for the other, they can each vote for whoever they would like to because they each get their own votes. When we first started this country after the Revolutionary War, we only gave the right to vote to white males. Now that our country has gone through many protests and changes, every single adult can vote, no matter who they are. Back when I was little, I thought it was strange that only certain people could vote, but now I understand that that was normal back in the day. Because we used to be so discriminatory, our country has made sure that everyone gets a chance to decide our country's future to make up for the past. One historical event that shows protesting really works is the Women's Suffrage Movement of 1913, which many women protested the right to vote. Eventually, they did get the right to vote through the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution. In this current day and age with the global pandemic that is happening, it has been hard to reopen pretty much anything, from schools to restaurants. Each have had to take many precautions to avoid spreading the virus. With the upcoming election, I feel that our government has done a great job at making the voting process as safe as possible with giving the people the choice to come to places to vote, or the mail-in to their votes, utilizing the postal system. I think that if the government had not done the mail-in voting, there would have been a lot less voters coming to the polls. That just goes to show that the real leaders of our country are the people. Because the government is making sure that as many people as possible get their vote in, that shows that they are serious about hearing everyone's vote. I believe with all of my heart that Americans, no matter who or what they are, absolutely need the right to vote, and that our country has done everything in its power to ensure that. Voting has proved itself as one of the most efficient forms of government for three major reasons, and these reasons are that we each get a choice to determine who the leaders are with respect to our privacy. We give everyone and anyone a chance to decide our country's future, as long as they are Americans or aspiring Americans. And besides these two, there is also the fact that the government has made sure people will still vote, even with the current pandemic. It inspires me that our country has improved this much since it was just another colony that belonged to the Kingdom of Great Britain.
I would just say that your family's example is something that I think a lot of people should start to think about. You can support different candidates and still like and be kind to one another. So, very nice job.
Mr. President, members of the board, we'll next move to recognizing our students who were the first, second, and third-place winners in our high school category. Also joining us tonight via Zoom is our third-place winner, and that's ninth grader at Carson High School, Mr. Todd Goslin. Todd, are you out there? Do you want to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you. It was a fun essay to write.
We're proud of you, Todd, and we hope that you keep up the good work. We'll be watching your academic progress over the years and hope to see you writing for many years to come.
Thank you so much.
Our second-place winner in the high school category is another ninth grader at Carson High School. We have Bryn Russell. And our first-place winner in the high school category, and I'm going to announce him as Nicholas Budd's brother, Jacob, also a first-place winner. Congratulations, Jacob Budd. Jacob, too, is a no stranger to academic excellence. We're very proud of him. And of course, his family's out of town tonight, but Jacob, also on the road, will be joining us via Zoom, and he'll read his essay for us at this time.
Can you hear me okay?
We could hear you.
Thank you. A citizen's right to vote is essential because it expresses a person's values and identity. It contributes to each individual's ideal society, and it allows people to exercise their agency and freedom. The right to vote personifies the freedoms that America stands for. Being an American citizen means being free. There is no king or tyrant to dictate a citizen's choices. Voting is a freedom that the citizens of America possess. It is a potent power that affects the daily life of all those who live in the United States. Through the proper use of this right to vote, America can have a successful democracy that is run by the people, for the people. But what does it mean to current and aspiring citizens? The right to vote is crucial because it expresses a person's values and identity as expressed by the things that they vote for. When an individual votes for a new law, amendment, or political person, it shows what values and standards they support or stand for. Expression is a privilege that many countries and nations lack. In some unfortunate circumstances, residents of foreign countries are subjected to rule by kings or unjust governments. These powers dictate everything about the nation, giving no voice to the people. The people are left to abide these precepts, endure severe punishments, or leave, which sometimes isn't even an option. They have no way to express their voice or their identities, which is a defining part of freedom. Citizens of America have the privilege, honor, and even responsibility to express themselves through their vote by supporting their own personal ideals. Immigrants and others wishing to join this country look with awe at the abilities that many Americans take for granted. Foreigners wonder at the right to express themselves and to show what they stand for, when many of them lacked that freedom before. They have been oppressed, dragged down, and forced to agree with the rules imposed on them. When they become citizens, they can have the power to express what they believe and to create their ideal society. The right to vote is also important because it contributes to each individual's ideal society. When a person votes, it is like a tally mark or a point that goes towards that person or law. This contribution helps to position our law that they are voting for to win, thus creating more of the society or government that they want. If they choose to refrain from voting, they choose to omit their voice from the political proceedings. Rather than adding a stick to the dam, the person simply lets the river flow past them, not putting any effort into the change that they wish to see. Some may claim that out of the 328.2 million people in the U.S., one person's vote just does not make a significant difference. On the other hand, how is a building built? Brick by brick, wall by wall, nail by nail. Hundreds and hundreds of nails, or hundreds and hundreds of bricks. Each brick is significant to the building of a house, just as each vote is essential to the construction of American government. With each brick, or with each vote, a citizen not only helps to build the House of American Government, but it shapes it in the way that that citizen wants it to be using their agency. In addition, a citizen's right to vote is imperative because it allows them to exercise their agency and their freedoms. When a person casts a vote for the law or person that they support, it shows that they are free to choose who or what they want to lead them. Rather than a king or a tyrant who takes away their freedom to choose whom they support, the act of voting is a choice, or an act of agency. Each individual is born with the right to choose, despite gender, race, ethnicity, nationality, or sexual orientation. Each human being has the physical ability to make a decision, and the Nineteenth Amendment backs that by stating, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex." America states that each citizen may exercise their agency by voting. If America were to restrict that right, the right to vote, it would essentially be denying the agency of its citizens, which they were born with, and all of the freedoms and privileges that this country stands for. All in all, the right to vote is absolutely essential in maintaining the ideal society that America is. The right to vote is a major part of the democracy that America is and the democracy that the citizens desire. It is a freedom, one of the many freedoms that America is built on, and a freedom essential to the voice of the people. Without this freedom, the government would take over, and the people would have no choice in their leaders or laws. To outsiders and to citizens alike, the right to vote can express their values and standards, contribute to their ideal society, and allow them to exercise their agency and freedom to choose. As the 100th anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment, which grants a higher meaning to freedom in America, rolls around, let each citizen remember what freedom means to them and how the right to vote embodies that freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. That was very well done. I'd like to just say thanks to all of the individuals who worked hard on their essays and who submitted them for consideration. I'd like to also thank teachers, staff members, parents, anyone who may have given some guidance or some direction as this work has been completed. Trustees, any comments from you?
Thanks, Mr. Stokes. As President Walker said, this is one of the more exciting things we get to do. I think we all appreciate. Anytime we get a chance to hear from the students, and when the students take time out of their schedules, especially in a year like this, it means a lot. It's fun for us, it's fun for me to see the progression of students. I used to say it's fun to watch them as little kids and how they grow and what they become in the school, but then we have examples of third graders at Seelager and all the other schools, and they write essays that floor me every year. Just, they're fantastic. They're well-written, they're articulate when they come up to speak, and I think it's a, you know, well, I want to congratulate everybody for that, because like they say, it takes a village. But the students, the parents, the teachers, the district, and our community, thanks for giving these students an opportunity, and this time more than ever, to express your opinion in an essay in a time when, as President Walker said, sometimes people don't want to hear certain opinions. You know, what a great opportunity it is as Americans to be able to express an opinion. And again, congratulations to our students. I'm always impressed by each and every one of you when I get a chance to read and listen to your essays.
Stacy?
I just remember when we started this, it was after 9/11, and the board decided to do this, and I'm glad that it's been going on ever since. And I'm especially proud that we don't limit it to Carson City School District students, that we open it up to the community, because we have a great, great community out there, especially with our kids, and there are different ways to learn, and it's great to see the homeschooled that we've had St. Teresa's, and we had Bethlehem Lutheran, and it's just exciting to see as a community, to see everybody participate in that. And in this day and age, it's, to me, it's just so nice to have hope, and you guys have given us that. And I can't tell you, to have the normalcy of something that we do every year, and to have you guys come out tonight and give up your time to come and get recognized, and to put in the time, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, because it's been a rough year for us up here, and to see this and to hear the voices of the youth, it just fills me with hope. So, I just want to thank everyone that was involved in this, and especially you students that took the time. And every year, when somebody reads their essay, I learn something new, and I appreciate that, too. But I really do appreciate your guys' time in coming out tonight.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Stokes, also thank you to you for your leadership and keeping this going and coordinated. And we are keeping a tally by record, by my count here. You have two checks for the Budd family, and so we're going to ask AJ to keep track of what that interest would be if you don't turn it over to them in a timely manner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jacob, if you're still listening, I just wanted to make sure that you know that we'll hang on to your prize money and your certificate at my office as well, and invited you and your brother to come by anytime during our business hours, and we'll happily hand that over to you both. Well done, and congratulations to everyone.
So now we'll get on to the really fun stuff. Mr. Feeling and Dave Silva for presentation of possible action on the fiscal year 2020 annual independent audit and report on financial statements as required per NRS 354.624 for possible action. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Good evening, President Walker and trustees. Tonight is a bit of a capstone that we do annually on the prior fiscal year. Nevada-Drive statutes, 354.624 requires--
AJ, I think you might need to take your mask off or put your microphone really close.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. 354.624 requires an annual external audit of financial statements, compliance in all business of the district. Since 2013, Mr. Dave Silva, representing Silva, Shirani, and Associates, has provided audit services to the district for the school board. And without further ado, I'll let Mr. Silva discuss the fiscal '20 audit, so you may consider it for approval.
Thanks, AJ. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here tonight. Frankly, it's nice to be anywhere. And I realize that you've had the audit for a few days, and I have just a handful of comments for you, so I think I can whip through this really very quickly. First off, and probably the most important thing, is once again, clean opinion, also known as an unmodified opinion, and there are no findings and no violations that were reported. So, kudos to everybody responsible, and certainly primarily AJ for all of his efforts in that regard. One little blip this year that I do need to point out is called a prior period adjustment, and that's fancy accounting lingo for correction of an error. And we go to great lengths to describe that for you. I believe it's on page 97, at the back of the footnote section. And I think AJ is going to discuss some of the details surrounding this, but pretty quickly. What it was, was back in 2018, the district recorded an accounts receivable and recorded revenue for reimbursement of E-Rate funds. At the time that that transaction occurred, there was every expectation that receipt would be coming expeditiously and very quickly after the end of the year. That did not happen, and according to those darn governmental accounting rules, if, generally speaking, if you don't receive that receivable or a receivable within, say, 60 to 90 days of the fiscal year end, then it really shouldn't be recognized as revenue. So, that was back in 2018. And in 2019, we kept it on the books with the expectation that, well, surely any day now, that receivable will be collected. Well, 2020 comes around, and as we might have expected for 2020, that receivable still has not been collected. So, AJ and I made the decision after consultation that, well, look, it really should not have been recorded as revenue back in 2018. So, we're going to take it out of fund balance in the fund that it was recorded as revenue in, and that was your Capital Projects Fund. However, and as is appropriate, it is still being shown as an accounts receivable. The only difference now is the other side of it. Instead of it being revenue, it's, again, beware accounting terminology here, it's unavailable revenue, which is a kind of a cockeyed way of saying deferred revenue, which means you have not collected it yet. So essentially, still having given up hope, so it is still a receivable. And AJ, did you want to add anything on that?
Yeah, I can speak to that now. So, the E-Rate funding is a federal reimbursement grant specifically for information technology-related items. For a long time, it was more or less limited to helping you pay for internet costs, paying for cell phone costs if you had them, things along those lines, unless you had a much higher level of free and reduced launch. higher level of free and reduced lunch. About 2015, that changed, and some more became available to all districts. Within our capital projects plan, over the last number of years, we've done some really significant and costly upgrades of our internet network system across the district. When doing that, we expect funds, a portion of those funds, at least half of the costs in general, to be reimbursed. With this specific instance, what basically occurred is a, there's two ways that you can potentially benefit from this. Either you front all of the funds and this branch of the FCC called USAC reimburses you whatever portion of the costs, or the business itself can ask for the funds from USAC, and they get it directly, and then they basically bill you the net difference. When going through this process, we had a company that actually we ended up not even working with. They had initially been awarded the project, and then we decided not to do it, and then we went back a number of years later to do it. But in that process, the business had gone to USAC to request funds to help pay for the project, even though we hadn't agreed to do it with them. So it's incredibly frustrating. That single instance then cascaded through a series of events where, once we went and purchased the equipment and then asked for our reimbursement, the federal government said, well, USAC said, well, we've already paid these funds out. So this business had collected on it, so we had to go through a process of getting them to pay back USAC. But as that was happening, and then, or while it took time for that to happen, we then asked for reimbursement, and so we have an appeal with the FCC at the moment. We have won appeals with the FCC before related to E-rate items, but this one is still outstanding. So we completely feel that we are due this money. We believe we will receive the money. It's just taking time to get through the appeal process. So, that's it.
A.J., do you think we'll get those funds before Trustee Wilkie's fifth and final term as a trustee?
I am, I am confident we will see it, and I am hopeful we will see it before Trustee Wilkie's time is up.
Okay, the, the next item I'd like to point out to you all is on page 10 of the audit report, and this is something new this year that A.J. and I thought would be kind of cool to include in the MDNA because it is a bit of good news, and we all like to have good news, and we all need good news. You know, every year we talk a little bit about your fund balance, and I know that A.J. talks quite a bit about it throughout the year, and certainly the management of the fund balance and the general fund is really quite critical. And this chart demonstrates that you guys are in a really pretty healthy financial position right now, and it also demonstrates that you've maintained that quite consistently over the past number of years. You know, we didn't go back all the way, you know, to the point where we originally had data, obviously, but we went back to 2014, and it's a pretty nice trend. Now, you'll perhaps note that the last three years does show a bit of a decline. I think we would all be very surprised if it did not, given the circumstances, but a very healthy ratio, and there's a pretty good explanation, I think, right at the top of that page, if you want to go back and get some more information on it. But I did want to point it out because I, again, I think it's good news and really shows a commitment to your financial health.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, certainly.
I've been trying to remember, last year we had this discussion.
Yes.
And we talked about if, and I can't remember off the top of my head, if we fall under a certain percentage, we can never go above that again, correct? And so I'm worried about with these current financial situations and who knows what the future is going to hold here, what is the long-term prospect of that?
Excuse me. President Walker, A.J. Feeling, for the record, just for, and to remind Mr. Silva too, because he is not on the Commission on School Funding that I'm on, where we talk about this quite a bit. So, right. But the idea being that, so that, that two-month, kind of 16% threshold of fund balance, the way that this new funding formula is set up, right now we're above 16%, but at some point in the future, when we drop below 16%, we never again would be allowed to go above it. So it would actually restrict us from ever, say, as now, saving to hopefully get through what is likely to be a rather tough time in the future. So if you would go above that amount, the state would actually take back funds from you to hold you there. So I think a question kind of along those lines and your thoughts on the, maybe some concern with that, or how you think districts will fare if they have that limitation set upon them?
Well, certainly a lot of concern. I think we have a lot to talk about at our next lunch. I obviously need to get up to speed on that, but it strikes me as being quite concerning. I can remember back in, wow, I'm really dating myself, but early 90s, I think it was, and I was on the Nevada State Board of Accountancy, and at that time, the Nevada State Board of Accountancy had a nice fund balance for a small, small board, and the concern that particular, in one of those years that I was on the board, was, and I think Governor Miller was the governor at that time, the concern was that these boards, occupational boards, if you will, that had any, any sizable funds, you know, whatever sizable might mean, fund balance, it was up for grabs. And boy, the headache, the heartache, the worry, the concern that that caused, not obviously just the State Board of Accountancy, but all, at that time, all occupational boards. I mean, it was just, just pretty wild. That did not come to pass. There was, there was nothing mandated that cleaned out the bank account, if you will. But we are in very different times now, and, you know, I say every year that, you know, even in the years that we've had very recently that have been very prosperous, very good years for all of us in the state, that we never, ever know what's down the pike, and I think, you know, that speaks to that really well. So I'm sorry, I can't directly answer your question. I obviously need to get up to speed, but A.J. is perhaps one of the top guys in the state of Nevada as far as this kind of stuff, so I think he can help me pretty readily.
It's safe to say we want to do everything we can to keep that ending fund balance up.
You betcha. You betcha. You bet. Yeah, interesting times ahead. I think that's the guarantee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you have any more?
Just two more things.
Okay.
The next item that I had was any questions, any other questions I can answer for you? I'd be glad to. And then, just as importantly to me anyways, as all these other items, I sure want to thank you guys. It's Thanksgiving, and I have a lot to be grateful for and am grateful for, and that includes our association with you folks, and it's much appreciated, and I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and I think that I'll speak for all of us when I say we appreciate, you know, each year you come, and these reports are always very thorough and professionally done, and you're very, you're good to us, so I mean, we're happy to have your partnership and your assistance, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comment. Thanks very much.
Do we have any other questions for Dave or A.J. about this? Stacy?
I just have one on page 12, and this is probably more to A.J. than it is to you, Dave, but when we're talking about the bond issue fund, and we had the 11 million, have we done the high school turf? Or when is that on the plan?
Thank you, Trustee Wilkie. We have not yet. Actually, I believe it was either, it was either last Friday or the Friday before, Mr. Kornick had some reps come out to the Carson High football field and track area to take a look and to formalize some quotes. So the plan is that that would get done this summer, so in preparation for the, it'd be ready for the next football season. And it would be replacing the track area as well, not just the football field.
Thank you. And then just to reiterate, Mr. Walker's, we have really enjoyed our relationship with you, Mr. Silva, as you have come from different companies to keep going, keep going with us, but you've always been very fair and you've taken in account of our financial situation, which is very rare in these days, so we do appreciate the, appreciate that.
President Walker?
Yes. And just real quick, A.J.
Oh, sure.
Lupe, I can't tell, were you waving because you want to? Okay, okay, go ahead, A.J.
Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to extend my own thanks to my fiscal services staff, and each year I leave out the human resources staff, they're a large part of this as well, and not to throw kudos to Jose, but I'll do that at the same, at least to his staff, I will. But they do a great job, and all of Mr. Silva's staff, when they're coming in and out, just very professional, and my folks enjoy working with them. So that is just a good relationship that we have year after year. So looking after, you know, over $100 million annually in expenditures and the affairs of 1,300 employees, and just really proud after a concerning COVID-y end of the year that things still turned out well, and thank you to Dave for his time and always being a call away when I have questions regarding whatever issue may come up. So, thank you.
And next year's dinner has to be twice as big because we didn't get one this year.
Make it a barbecue.
Thank you, and I'll just remind the board, this is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees accept the Carson City School District Annual Financial Report and Audit for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2020, and instruct the Director of Fiscal Services to file the report as public record in accordance with NRS 354.624.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Joe, second from Richard. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none, any public comment in the room? Seeing none, any public comment on the telephone?
Seeing none.
Any public comment on email, Renee?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
Okay, then I will call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Glad you're still there, Laurel. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Thank you, A.J. Happy Thanksgiving. Item number nine on the agenda, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 275, School Social Workers Safe School Professionals Program. This is the second reading and for possible action, and we welcome Mrs. Fuson. Good evening.
Good evening, President Walker. Thank you. As you stated, this is the second reading of Policy 275. The changes that were made were just to update the title from Safe Schools Professionals to School Social Workers and School Mental Health Workers. During the first reading, there was one request by the board to remove the "and parentheses", which is shown in red on your copy, so that correction has been made, and I am requesting adoption of the amended policy as it sits in front of you.
Any questions from the trustees? Seeing none, all, this is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve November 24, 2020 as a revised date for CCSD Policies 275, School Social Workers SSW/School Mental Health Workers SMHW Program.
Second.
We have a motion from Stacy, second from Lupe. Any further discussion from the trustees? Seeing none, any public comment in the room? Seeing none, any public comment on the telephone?
Seeing none.
Any public comment on internet or email?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, discussion and possible action on the Superintendent's Annual Evaluation for the 2020 calendar year. This is for possible action. So we have, everyone submitted their ratings to Renee, and she compiled those, each of the comments we made and our scores, and then as prior practice, she averaged those scores for each of the areas and then rounded that up, and then at the end, she averaged the grand total for the final rating. And so I guess we could just go through section by section, and if people had comments they wanted to make, we could do that? Or do we have any suggestions for a different method? So the first, leadership and district culture. So just, I guess I should have clarified a little bit better. The comments you have on this draft, this is part of our record, but if you want to enter them into the official record or the minutes, you will want to read your comments into the record. All right. Seeing no comments, we have, the average was 3.29 for leadership and district culture, and that rounded to 3, which was very satisfactory. Next area is employer superintendent relationships or relations. Those, we had, that averaged to 3.29, and that also rounded to 3.0, which was very satisfactory. Comment on employee relations. Okay, the next area is community relations and communication, and that rounded 3.43, which rounded to very satisfactory 3.0. Organizational management rounded to, or was averaged at 3.57, which rounded to a 4.0, which was superior. Educational program curriculum planning and development was, average was 3.14, and that rounded to a 3.0, which was very satisfactory. Instructional leadership, professional and leadership development, our average was 3.14, rounded to 3.0, which was very satisfactory. Human resources management, staff and personnel relations, our average was 2.86, which rounded to a 3.0, which was very satisfactory. Values, ethics, leadership, that average was 3.86, which rounded to a 4.0, which was superior. Financial management and business- Financial Management and Business Matters. Our average was 3.71, which rounded to a 4.0, which was superior. Management and Implementation of Strategic Plan. Our average was 3.43, which rounded to 3.0, which was very satisfactory. Student Achievement Average was 2.86, which rounded to 3.0, very satisfactory. And the overall rating, our average was 36.58, which would round to 37, which came into the very satisfactory rating. So that's a summary. Do, does anybody have any comments, concerns, thoughts? Richard?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr. Stokes for all his work during this pandemic. I know it's been very challenging and I think you've done a very marvelous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate some of that. I think Richard Superintendent Stokes is, he is exceptional. I tend to grade a little hard when it comes to achievement and things like that. But when I look across the board at all the struggles and challenges we have, I'm really very happy and honored that Mr. Stokes is our superintendent. Just a great person all around, a great leader. And real pleased to be helping, you know, in our capacity, working with Mr. Stokes. So thank you very much.
Go ahead, Lupe.
I also have a couple of comments here. So, Mr. Stokes, I know that our student demographics have changed over the years. And I know you have made progress in diversifying the paraprofessionals pool. And I thank you for that. I'd like to recommend that we continue making efforts in diversifying the staff in other critical positions. I also want to thank you for the tremendous enhancement with the communication method recently implemented. The parent square is almost a wish come true, in my opinion. It allowed us to communicate with everyone in multiple languages. I think that is tremendous. I also recognize you were very receptive in the idea of offering agenda items bilingual in English and Spanish to ensure that all families in our district were part of the critical discussions. For this and for everything you do for our families in our school district, thank you so very much. Muchisimas gracias.
Stacy, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for extending your contract. I can't imagine what this year would have been like otherwise. So thank you.
Laurel, did you have any comments or feedback?
Okay, it takes a little bit for my unmuted to come out. I just want to thank Mr. Stokes too. Throughout this, this whole last nine months has just been one thing after another. And he has been a calm, even though he probably hasn't helped it as much as he's demonstrated it. But just such a calming influence. And I think the families and the students and on our staff have greatly appreciated that. And I know I have as well. So I just want to thank him for all of that.
Thank you, Laurel. And I think, and, you know, one of the things I had said to Mr. Stokes is, I can't imagine going through this year with a new superintendent. And I think, you know, one of the, we all know that there's room for growth as an educational institution. If we're not lifelong learners, we're not going to be successful. And so we have our goals and we have areas that we would like to improve. And I think that last year, Mr. Stokes made some ambitious goals and was ready to embark on those. And then COVID hit. And literally, everything got set aside and the focus became on getting kids back in buildings and making sure that they received the meals they needed to stay healthy. And, you know, he did that without missing a beat and he didn't complain. And there were times I had to meet him at the district office on a Saturday and sign emergency paper to go to the state or late night, early calls that we were having. And so I think he was, he's really been in the hot seat. We've all been in the hot seat, but he's really in the hot seat. And he's handled it with grace and professionalism. And I think we're well-served by you as our superintendent. So thank you. Mr. Stokes, did you have anything you'd like to add or any comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say thanks to each of you for your kind words. It would be really difficult, I think, to do this job even more so if we had a fractured board of some kind and we don't. It's really an honor to serve with each of you. And I know each of you have the best interests of our students and our community at heart. And I think that that shows in the work that we've been able to do together. I'd also like to thank Renee. She'll probably throw something at me. But really, without her knowledge of the district, her understanding of our staff, she's been here long enough that she really does understand the operations. And she is such a help. There's just things I do not have to worry about and I'm so grateful to her. And then to my own individual staff, my leadership team. These guys truly are professional individuals. They're very smart. They're very dedicated. They have a way to kind of guide me when I need it. And I'm truly grateful for what they do and the influence that they are, not only on me, but on our principals and our teachers. Tremendous human beings. And then there's our folks in the buildings every day who are doing really difficult jobs and under tough circumstances. And we're supported on every angle from these folks in the buildings, from our support staff, from our community members, our parents. I mean, I really look at some of my peers and the jobs that they have in their communities and I wouldn't trade any of them. This is really the best place to work. And I'm so grateful for the opportunity to serve and certainly to be supported at all angles, especially by this board. So thanks to each of you for your guidance and your feedback, your direction. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. And I'll just remind the board, this is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees deem the overall rating of Mr. Richard Stokes, Superintendent of Carson City School District, to be a score of 37, which is very satisfactory for the 2020 calendar year.
Second.
Motion from Joe, second from Richard. Any further discussion from the trustees? Seeing none? Any public comment in the room? Seeing none? Any public comment on the telephone?
Seeing none.
All right. And any public comment on email?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you and congratulations, Mr. Stokes. Item number 11, Approval of the Consent Agenda. This is for possible action.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
All right, we have a motion from Richard, second from Joe. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none? Any public comment in the room? On telephone?
Seeing none.
Email?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 12, Informational Items. This is for discussion only. Have any questions about upcoming events?
Just, how exactly is Silver and Snowflake Festival working? Is there a way that we can see it or is it after we go see it or?
I'm not, I'm not sure. Could you maybe speak a little clearer into the microphone?
Yes. It's just on the Silver and Snowflake Festival tree lighting? Because obviously, it's not going to be in person. Is there a way for the public and board members to see it?
I believe, Trustee Wilkie, there are parts of that event that are in person. I don't know how the governor's recent pause will change. But I know that from the perspective of the fifth-grade singers, that's going to be videoed. And so those videos will be running at different portions of the, of the community as people walk around the streets. So whether or not that's, that was the last information I had, whether or not that has changed now, I can't really say. I'll try to find out though and I, I'll pass that along to the trustees.
Item number 13, Requests for Future Agenda Topics.
This one would be for after the, next year. But there's been a lot of talk about the mental health issues of the students, especially lately. And I know we usually have that report from Mr., from Dave Colario, where we have the breakdowns. So I just want to make sure that that gets on the schedule for next year.
So, and we're fine, in your opinion, waiting until the normal time they would report?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. Because I think it's an end-of-the-year report anyway. But just an update, because there has been a lot of talk about the mental health state of students with this, everything going on. And just, I've gotten a lot of questions about it.
So Lupe, one of the questions I have for you is, you know, we haven't done one of those bilingual sessions. Are there any topics that as we're nearing the end of the semester that might be beneficial to cover for some of our Spanish-speaking families?
So last time Mr. Stokes and I met, we talked about the idea of having the agenda translated in Spanish and posted on the school district website. The idea was to allow parents to see the topics that were going to be discussed. And if there was any interest in families attending, Letitia Servin would be able to help us. Am I accurate on that, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Ramirez. So we, in addition, we're also using our board's docs process to have our board minutes translated into Spanish. So those are available as well. So between the board minutes and the board agenda, we then will, in utilizing Trustee Ramirez's contacts, will have those families get ahold of us. And then using Mrs. Servin from Carson High School, she will actually attend a meeting and go through the translation of any of those agendized items that are of interest to our families. So yeah, we're taking steps here to try to move forward. Hopefully, the goal is to encourage our Latino families in becoming engaged to a greater degree and even attending our meetings eventually and helping us out in whatever way they're, they're comfortable.
Well, and I think one thing that might be beneficial, Mr. Stokes, is after the winter break here, we're going to start our WEDA access testing. And maybe we could ask Tanya Scott to come and just give an overview for families of what that testing entails and why it's so important, just so that they understand that.
Be happy to set that up.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Mike. I think that would be helpful.
All right. So we will adjourn the meeting at 8:24. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.